If we had a resolution like this and had authority to give, partner with in a different way, maybe that plan would have already been developed and just presented to the board. That's the kind of things that I think our community is looking for, and I think it's time for us to act. So again, I don't know where I'm at on this. It's going to come back on the board again possibly. It may be an action item tonight. I mean, it is an action item, maybe voted on tonight, but I do know that I don't want to see Mr. Barney here saying, a year from now, it's the fifth year that I've came for North Omaha Community, well, we know we have something that works, and we're refusing to replicate it. Thank you. Ms. America.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think I'm comfortable voting on this tonight, and I'm glad you presented it as a draft, because I do think there's some just changes and cleanups and things that need to be made. I know when we met, I was very appreciative of the fact, because when I was receiving feedback from others in the community that had seen this, their main question was, well, what does this do that you can't already do? And I think one of the highlights of our conversation together was, like you said, it doesn't specifically say, "We want to do this that we can't already do," or requesting legislation to do this that we can't already do, but it's more sending a statement of, "This is something we believe in, we think that communities should have input into their school," but that it should be the school district itself giving that authority versus an outside entity that's not elected by taxpayers, holding taxpayer money, or overseeing taxpayer money, which is just something I am completely ethically opposed to. That being said, and if you are open to these, I'm very willing to work with you on a couple of these, and we had changed it so that it's concerning opportunity schools, and I think that theme needs to be more cohesive throughout the whole resolution, because we mentioned locally chartered schools versus locally authorized schools. We specifically say charter schools versus opportunity schools, and I don't want our district to get in a position where our own words are used against us, because people tried to make that happen last year, based on the wording of things that we had done. One thing I noticed is we don't currently have a tie-in to any of the specifics of our strategic plan, and that's something that we've asked district staff to include when they present us with things, and we've asked of community members, and so I think if we as a board are passing a resolution concerning our district, that we should do the same and include the references and the tie-in to show how it relates to our strategic plan for our community. And then, I think obviously if we're working with our community and with partnerships to create these opportunity schools and new opportunities for education, I think we should reference the community partnership and evaluation policy in some way in there, saying that that's the avenue, because I think that is the most appropriate avenue, since we passed that policy, that these programs or partnerships would come about, is through that pathway of suggestions, letter of intent, due to the full policy. So that is my two cents of this.
Those are great. That's great input. Thank you very much, Ms. America. Sorry, I didn't realize Mr. Wayne left. Do you know which one of you had your hands up for? Okay. Ms. Williams and then Mr. Scanlon.
I appreciate Mrs. Faye, your, the proactiveness and the thought behind this. I guess my only hesitation for me even looking more into this is, I think I really would hate to send the message that we're looking for charter schools, and the language, you know, it says opportunity schools, but it's, there's charter references, and I would hate to send that message to say, "Hey, we're open to it," and then those, that does come back to us to say, "Hey, you know, you're saying that you're open to this, and now we're going to push it." I think that, again, I just feel how I feel about this, and I feel like we have a lot of work that we're already doing. I agree that, yes, we need innovative schools, and maybe it is time for us to bring back the Skinner conversation, it is that time, but I just, and I'm more than willing, you know, scheduling, just trying to work this out, but, I mean, that's my hesitation, and I don't, I would prefer not to vote on this, to really have more time to kind of dive in, and I, again, I appreciate so much that proactive thought, you're trying to get ahead, and I, you know, that's, we need to be thinking proactively, you know, we don't need the reactive. But I also just feel, and I've heard a couple comments that, you know, "We want this," well, I'm not getting, I'm not hearing "we want this." I'm hearing from a few handful, "We want a charter-like concept." I'm not overwhelmingly, I'm hearing, "No, you guys are doing great work, stay on the path, you're looking at innovative solutions and curriculum, and, you know, we're doing a lot of the work," and so I just would like more time for us to kind of work through this, and really, I mean, I think Ms. America had some great points, and, you know, I just, I want to be more comfortable with what this really means and how it could possibly be interpreted, but I do thank you for the work, because I know that you've taken some time to do this, and, again, that proactive thought is very important in the work that we're doing. So I look forward to us kind of working through this and having more conversation.
I still have the same feelings as I did last year, that, you know, we're into a transition in the early stages still with the new superintendent, new board. We have developed four new positions of the executive directors, which, one of them, I was at Miller Park for the Gold Luncheon, and the attitude and feeling in that building is just, I mean, it's, you're going to succeed no matter what, you're going to overcome things, the staff goes above and beyond, and they're, the test scores, they are higher than a lot of the schools surrounding, in the same neighborhood with the same demographic makeup, and to see that, you know, one of the executive directors, Lisa Utterback, came from Miller Park as the principal, and you have these executive directors that are now there to be a resource to the schools, where we're saying, "Why can't you guys imitate this and take this program and make it work over here?" Well, that's kind of what I'm seeing, is the executive directors, they're able to work, collaborate with principals around and say, "What's the problem? What do you need? Resources? These are some things that we found that worked at our more successful schools that are facing the same free and reduced lunch." I think that's more of, we're making strides, I think, as a district, and promoting that. I mean, I've got a list of the different magnet and career programs that we have. We have the dual language, visual and performing arts, global studies, econ, I mean, those schools are out there, and now I think we have the infrastr, the organizational chart now in place, to where before it was the superintendent that had all these principals reporting to him, and didn't have that time and resources to get into the schools and to work one-on-one with those principals. So I think that now we have those four positions, and I, you know, I'm hearing positive things of feedback, that they're working, looking to try to implement new strategies, so I believe that we are headed down that road for, you know, expanding our successful schools in whatever you want to call them, opportunity schools, magnet schools, charter schools. I think as we continue to develop alternative education, which I think we've already started to do that with, since Mark Evans has been in the position of superintendent, so I think we're headed in a good direction. I'd hate to kind of bump us off course, that I think is, we're on a good course right now, it's going to take some time to see results. We're also expanding our pre-K, which I think is huge into the success of overcoming the high poverty areas, and just increasing our test scores and our results of our students, so, you know, I really can't get behind a state-run type program, where I think at OPS, we are starting to make strides, expanding our alternative education and providing opportunities for all of our students.
Mrs. Gotti.
You know, I echo many of the same sentiments that Matt just had, and I guess this was the one item that, this week was the big item that people called me on, primarily because of the charter school piece. I have, over time here, had calls from folks in my sub-district and I think elsewhere too, but specifically saying, "Hey, you know, what we want to see is equitable resources across the district," and, you know, I just went back to the guiding principles, and, you know, much of it was high expectations, rigorous curriculum, equitable and efficient systems, safe and healthy students, and so when I think about what the needs analysis said that we wanted to do, I just want to make sure that we don't, and then I think that was the concern that was brought to me this week by a number of, primarily, staff of Omaha Public Schools. Let's not get off track, because you're giving us so much, and there's so many things on our plate right now that we're expected to do. Be thoughtful and be careful in thinking about what you add on to our plate, and I guess if there's opportunity to do things within our schools without having the charter piece and whatever the wording and the language is, then yes, we should definitely be looking at that, if that's what that particular community is coming to us and giving us an LOI for and saying, "This is what I want to do in this area," to work toward that. I think about the piece of Wilson that's different is that, you know, there's a number of pieces, but part of that is that extended day, extended year, and I think back to the budget process, and that being a 12% increase in the cost of operating that school, and just thinking about how does that impact us as we think about using our resources, and are there ways, you know, we certainly can't implement that everywhere, because we just don't have those kind of resources or funds available. So I'm not comfortable voting on this tonight either, I just want to really think through that process, think through what the needs analysis said, think through what our strategic plan says we're working toward, and make sure that we don't send a message to our staff and our families that says, "Hey, we're now off on another track," where they've given us the input for where they want us to go. So I guess that would be the only piece to that, that, I'm just trying to work through that piece, so.
Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, President Wayne. You know, I think this is an interesting, interesting opportunity. I, in my day job, I'm an education consultant, education policy consultant. I'm often working with school districts and giving them advice on how they should implement new initiatives, how they should implement policy reform, and how to do it with sustainability and not to be too rushed. I think what I appreciate about this objectively is that this is an opportunity to be proactive, to define what we would like as a district and as a board innovation and choice to look like, without it being sort of imposed upon us, you know, from legislation or what other piece. That's, I think that's the benefits of this. But it is unique in that, you know, we're in a politically charged atmosphere, we're charter, connotates a lot, and we've had these conversations in the past, even just having, even just having a conversation about charter schools in learning spurred controversy at our board tables, and we, you know, we were all on different ends, and that's fine, right? But I think the bigger issue at hand is, if we don't have a plan for how we're going to take advantage of existing innovations in our district more comprehensively, what do we expect to change? I mean, we're talking about, you know, focus schools, we're, you know, we're talking about these choice schools, expanding dual language happened at Liberty, it happened to happen at another school. The question on my mind is, where is, where is our strategic direction? You know, we talked about 75 North, and there's a, we need a plan and action to guide that work. I think that's right, and what Ms. Williams said. I also think we need a plan and action as a district on how we're going to take advantage and learn from all these district progress, and not be, let it, not let it just happen to us and let things hang by the waysides. And that's what I appreciate about this, I think there's a conversation we need to have, because I look at other districts that I've worked with and helped write resolutions that say, "This is what innovation looks like," and we define it as magna program, dual language, you know, you know, a district-run charter, what have you, and they define it very clearly, and then that guides how they do their work over the next five to 10 years, and what they support and they don't support. I think for as, insofar as we don't have a plan, things, we're going to continue to be reacting to things, and if they are politically charged, it's going to be a lot harder for us, for us to take advantage of them. So I think there's merit to Mr. Barney's, you know, commitment to this focus school and it not being, us not taking advantage of that. I think there's merit to us thinking about a district-run charter, not because it's the answer to any solution, but because if there are any, any community members or parents asking for it, well, that has to have some merit, right, as much as those that don't want it as well. If we don't define something and plan, plan for it, it's going to happen to us. I think that is the message that's coming away from this. So I'm more than happy to have more conversations about this, and so that it's not as charged and it feels more comprehensive, but this does feel like a unique opportunity from my, from my background and experience, to set a plan. Charlotte Mecklenburg has a plan, they created one, I'm looking at it again, they had a strategic, they created within their, a whole different arm within their district strategic plan on just innovation and turnaround, that included charters, included community involvement, you know, with school turnaround, like 75 North. It was a comprehensive, they wrote it down, that guided what they did. We don't have that, so we're letting it happen to us. If we write something and we do it together, I think we have a better direction. I think we are then doing right by all the things that we have done well, and looking outside of things that we could do better.
Any other, Mr. Snow.
I agree with Mr. Vargas on many points. I think we have a great opportunity here to get ahead of what is possibly, I wouldn't say possibly, will come down the pipeline. I mean, and this is something that we can be involved, involved in, and actually tell the state and our constituents, "This is what we think opportunity schools will look under our district. If not, we're going to be reactive to something that's going to be forced on us." I personally think it's a lot harder for someone to create legislation if we've already, we're the innovators in that. And when I say that, I mean, give this an opportunity, like I said, all these, in my opinion, I think a lot of these, the Howard Kennedy with 75 North, Wilson Focus, a possible Skinner Focus, could all be lumped onto this. And I think it just, I'm open to that conversation, because I don't think this is a charter school, because obviously from the reading of it, I mean, this answers to the Omaha Public School Board. And if we can frame that under any way we can, we're basically taking that, I would say, adding more choice to our district. And whether people think so or not, we have people in our community right now that have completely, in my opinion, have said we felt them. Whether it's right or wrong, they have said the public school system has felt them, and they're willing to do anything to do something else, so why not still have them participate in Omaha Public Schools, saying, "We're going to listen to you, bring your idea to the district, and then we can go with it," or go against it. I don't, I don't see anything wrong with this, it's not saying we are allowing any school to show up, it's basically saying, there's an opportunity for, if you had a school that you wanted to create in your community, you could come up in front of the district and do that. And then it could be charged by the Omaha Public Schools. I think we, I think if we just continue to say no and not be open to many things in the community, it starts to fester, and then when it happens, we lose a lot of our kids. And to be honest with you, you could just look at some of these cities our same size, when charter schools came about, and they destroyed these school districts, because I don't think they were ahead of the curve ball. And this is what our plan is. Thank you.
Mrs. Underwood, follow up. Mr. Evans.
Thank you. Like some of you have mentioned, I agree that the, just the word charter really elicits a strong reaction, no matter what side of the fence an individual is on, and this was one of the things that I have been contacted the most on by my constituents after we had the discussion at the board table about the last legislative bill on charter schools. So I think that that means that we really need to proceed slowly and diligently about any conversation related to opportunity schools. You know, I like the fact that this resolution very clearly states that they must function in partnership with traditional schools that are free and open to all students, that are funded through the chartering district, et cetera, because the last legislative bill was not, and that was really the big-ticket piece for me, as far as drawing the line where I could not support that. So I really, I think it's great that we're making an attempt to be proactive about this. I do think it warrants further conversation, but we need to be very diligent about it. I don't think that we need something like this in place in order to do something different for 75 North or to replicate the Wilson Focus School. I think that, you know, we can, we can do a lot of this under our current policy, and Wilson Focus School already exists, and so, you know, obviously we're able to do that without this, this resolution. So that's, those are my thoughts on the subject. I really like Lacy's, Ms. America's thought on, you know, any wording going forward, tying it to our strategic plan, I think that's really important. So that's all I had to say, so thank you.
Mrs. Faye. Huh? Oh, Mr. Evans, sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Evans, yeah.
I didn't write it down. This time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of thoughts. It is true, we have a lot of different choices currently in the district, from dual language to focus schools, to IB schools, to pre-IB schools, to technology-focused, STEAM-focused, there's quite a few choices. There's about 60 elementaries. Could we have more choices? I think we could. Do we need a resolution to have it? That's up to the board to decide. I kind of step back from that, but the bigger picture for me is, I want all 60 schools to be up here. I want all 60 schools to have the kind of achievement that Mr. Scanlon talked about, that he witnessed in the culture at Miller Park. I want all 60 schools to have young people meeting high achievement targets. I want all 60 elementary schools and all schools, all 87, to hit high targets. So we're not just haphazard about what we're doing, it's not just happening to us. You passed a strategic plan. This board engaged the community. This board asked a group of consultants to come in and tell us what we were doing well, what we needed to improve, and they were pretty explicit when they came back to us. They came back to us with feedback from our teachers, and they met with them and did interviews, including OEA leadership and also big focus groups, they did surveys, all kinds of work, and they gave us guidance. They said, "You have to increase the rigor in the classrooms across OPS if you're going to reach high achievement goals. Every school, you have to set cultures of high expectations in every single school across OPS." I think that's the road we're on today, and I'm not saying that precludes additional choice opportunities to the ones I just listed, and I listed quite a few. I think those are, I don't think there's anything wrong with providing more opportunities, and if moms and dads and community members want to be a part of putting that together, then I think that's a wonderful thing. But I think the bigger picture for me, as I look at staff and how they prioritize their time and function, are we following through on the strategic plan actions? Are we continuing to do the school stat sections, of which I gave an update to the board in our last board meeting, that was in your receipt of reports? We have a group of pilot schools right now that are doing school stat, which essentially is looking at their data and saying, "Are we making progress?" Looking at the metrics that identify student success in that individual school. So we're moving down that road. I think sometimes it's more about pacing than it's about agreement about where we're going. I think all of us agree on the direction. I think the pacing sometimes is probably more of the, more of the piece in question. So the good news is, as Mr. Barney said too, we've got a lot more than just Miller Park having success, and he quoted some schools too, that they've already reduced or totally annihilated the achievement gap. So the good news is, we've got that, where some of the, some of the ships are already on high tide. The bad news is, they're all not there. That's the bad news. And so how then are we as a system working with them? How are the EDs working with them? How will the strategic plan actions impact? How will the data analysis, it's going to be a part of putting their plan together? How's that going to, how's that going to be put into play? I think that's the bigger question for me, is that whole systemic piece, because it's a lot more than just one single school. It's a systems issue. Long-term improvement is always a systems issue. It's not a singular school, it's not two schools, it's a multiplicity of schools with the same type of high expectations, but they may have a different way of getting there. They may have a different way of getting there, and I'm very supportive of that, and I think staff is too. I don't see a lot of folks saying, "I don't want to do things differently." If it gets us the results and creates the climate of high expectations, which by the way, that in and of itself is a shift, and because of how we've changed and reorganized, we've shifted a lot of cultures. I think there's a book, Who Moved My Cheese? And I think we moved a whole lot of cheese in the last year and a half, and so I think that's part of the questioning too, and it's part of a good conversation that happens here at this board table, and it is a good conversation. It's a very good conversation, trying to determine the pacing of all of this change, and that's part of what we had from our critical friend analysis. As you recall, Scott Jop just met here and spoke to the board, gosh, was that a month and a half ago? And he shared results of teacher-focus groups and principal-focus groups, and I think everyone recalls what his comments were. A lot of it had to do with concerns from teachers and principals about the pace. They felt like we were moving so fast that they were getting lost in the shuffle. So those are big-picture issues to me, it's kind of related to this, but not totally related to it, because again, I am very supportive of finding different ways to get to the same end, which is student success. I'm very supportive of that, and would do whatever, just creating that understanding of the pacing and following a strategic plan that was voted on at this table is critical in my mind, and making sure I can demonstrate that we are putting those actions into play that we said we would. So it's kind of a bigger picture, but it certainly relates to this as well.
Let me, are you wrapping up? Are you, because I was going to comment if you were wrapping up, because since you introduced it, I figured you were going to wrap up. Again, I'm going to state this for the entire board, my question is, with all that's going on, granted, we're moving a lot of moving parts here, we're doing a lot of things, and we're asking staff to do a lot. My question remains, is why, why pick 75 North over Skinner? When in March, this board specifically asked for a update and a presentation on the expansion of Skinner, and we haven't did anything else? And maybe that's board leadership's fault, I'll take ownership of it, but my point is, is that that was organically community, community brought up to this board on multiple years, and it goes back to what we're talking about, about a plan, about everything else, but we can't, we can't say we're on the right track, so we shouldn't get off because we're doing this, but we're going to do that with 75 North. And all I'm saying is, we've already had a plan, this plan has been vetted multiple times with the community, they know probably to a dollar figure what it'll cost. All the things that we're asking 75 North to do was already done and already vetted for Skinner. And if, so if we're so busy and on the right track and have so many things going on, to me, Skinner's the easier option than creating a new plan with 75 North. And I'm for both, but I'm just saying, we shouldn't do one and leave that particular community who has vetted it, has talked about it, has done all, everything that I think they can do to get approval, and leave them out there. And I thank Mr. Barney for coming and reminding me, since I sat through three different presentations on it, that it's still there, and the community still wants it. So that's, that's my question, is, as we move forward, why are we picking something new instead of replicating something that's working? Ms. Williams, follow. Any other comments, then Ms. Faye will wrap up.
I just wanted to, I don't want to prolong, I know Mrs. Faye is eagerly awaiting, but I just, there's something-
I know Mrs. Faye is eagerly waiting, but I just, there's something that you said, Mr. Wayne, and it is, it's, I've, I came and prior to me being on the board, having that conversation about Skinner. And I know that the principal was on board and Mr. Barney, and there is, but I don't think you go which one. I think the conversation is, when are we going to bring Skinner back? I mean, because I think so, and so that's me saying, when are we going to bring Skinner back? And I'll leave it at that so that Mrs. Faye can finish up. Thank you so much.
And I agree with you. I'll leave it at that. Mrs. Faye.
And to be clear for the public and people still watching, this resolution is not about any one particular school, any one particular program. This comes out of the legislative, legislation team, as was stated at the beginning of this presentation, to be a proactive response to what has been continued divisive legislation that's been put before the board. And I think the way Mr. Vargas articulated it best, when he said, taking control of what we want rather than waiting for something to happen to us. And so I guess as you take this back, and, and I'd be happy to work with those of you who said that they'd sit down with me to massage some of the language, that you look at it that way and think about it that way, as the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education, the nine of us, talking about what it is that we do support in our schools before someone tells us what we will support. I want to be clear for Mr. Scanlon that, I think you said something about state-run and the resolution is very clear that these would be district-run schools, funding would go through, so Mrs. Underwood pointed out some of these, but just for people who don't have the resolution in front of them, free and open to all students, all of these things, I would presume, would be defined in any contract that were before us by any particular opportunity. Funded through the chartering district, held accountable for the same outcome, performance-based objectives that all Nebraska public schools are held, that's NISA testing. Locally-elected school boards would authorize these opportunities and, but that there would be more flexibility in the way that that funding would be spent within the school, that they'd have control over calendar staffing, budgetary independence, curriculum, professional development, and that ultimately that control would stay within the school board to approve or revoke any of these opportunity schools. So I think there's lots to talk about. The conversation that's been provided here, the input that you've given me is, and the committee, to take back and work on is more than I hoped for. It's great, you all really thought about it, you talked to your constituents. And so that makes the, the input that you've given really valuable, useful, relevant, it gives weight to it and I'm really, really appreciative. I think, Mr. Evans, just to close up my comments here, I think Mr. Evans' comments about a different way of getting there is, is really what this is. This is not about one school, this isn't about any one program that's been presented to us. This is about many pathways to success for lots of different students. And to be clear, not just in my mind, not just the persistently low-achieving schools. There's a lot of, there's 50,000 students in this, 50-plus thousand students in this school district. And, you know, I, I only had four of them in my house and they all learned really differently. So I can only imagine how differently 50-plus thousand students learn. There are many different individualized learning opportunities that appeal to all of those different students. And so I, I want to be clear that stating what, what matters to us, what our priorities are when it comes to opportunity schools, I'm just going to keep saying opportunity schools, is for all students. It's an answer for every child. Many do well in a very traditional public school and many do not. So again, being clear about what it is that we want and that matters to us, to me, is an action that I think we ought to bring back and can discuss further as a legislative strategy. So if there's no further discussion, I'd like that. Just to know from looking around the board that you'd like to see it come back out of the legislative team with some work and some more individual conversations. If not, then we had a great discussion tonight.
All right. Close session. All right, thank you. Moving forward.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, negotiations, personnel, pending litigation, legal advice, and real estate.
Motion on floor, is there a second?
So moved.
Motion on floor by Mrs. Gaudy, second by Mr. Snow. Any discussion? Roll call.
Merrick.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Faye.
Aye.
Gaudy.
Aye.
Nana.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board, the purpose of the closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary of the board, legal counsel, negotiations, personnel, legal advice, pending litigation, and real estate. At the record reflect, the board will enter closed session at 10:08 PM. Here you go, bud.